Bye.
Bye.
And we are going live. Oh, I'm gonna record to the cloud. And we're going live. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining. I see people are are coming in, so I appreciate that. Well, I'll stall for a minute while a few more people come in. It's um, it's really heartening to see so many of you wanting to be part of this ongoing conversation that the community is having. My name is Chris Sanders. I'm a member of the Westford School Committee, and it's my pleasure to welcome you all to what I hope and what I think will be a valuable opportunity to listen to the voices of our students. The murder of George Floyd a few weeks back created a long overdue moment in this country. It's a moment to reckon with our history, our racist history, our racist present, and to vow to do better. And this extends to our schools, to our public schools, which bind us together as communities of learning and communities of caring. And so that's why it's so important to listen to the experiences of our students, especially our students of color at this time. A lot of their stories go unheard. And before we're in a place to right the wrongs, we have to first understand where we're at. And that's what tonight is about. It's a tonight. It's a night of listening. We've collected the stories of a number of current and recent students of Westford Public Schools, stories about how race and ethnicity have impacted their education in Westford. Most of our stories were submitted anonymously and will be read by our moderators. But we do have a few students and alumni who have asked to share their stories live with you tonight. And on behalf of the school committee, I want to express my deep gratitude towards those students speaking live, those students who submitted and reached out to us for their courage to share their experiences with the entire community tonight. It's really a gift from them to us. But it's also a reminder of of our failure, our failure as a community, as leaders, as educators, as parents, and as neighbors. We have to do better. And tonight is a step on that path. We're doing better. Tonight is about listening, but action must follow. The school committee recently voted unanimously in support of the Westford Public Schools Eight Can't Wait Initiative. This was a series of actions that were proposed by many of the people you're going to hear from tonight. But others, past students, current students, other community members, actions that our schools can take tangible action to make Westford Public Schools more welcoming, equitable, and anti-racist. Before I introduce our moderators, who are on here smiling at you now, I want to give special thanks to the Westford Coalition for Change. This is a student-run coalition that has made a huge impact in town the past few months. A lot of people are familiar with what they're doing, using social media to call for action and to really highlight some of the stories that we're going to hear tonight. So we pulled some of the stories from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram feed, and we are grateful for them and for the people who submitted there for allowing us to do that. So we'll be intermixing those along with stories that were submitted to us directly tonight. If you wanted to submit a story and didn't get a chance, I will share the link in the chat. And so it's not too late to share for future, hopefully, future events. These will be shared with the Westford Public Schools Administration. You can submit anonymously or not, but I will put then a link in the chat, and it's not too late to share. We probably won't get to them tonight. We have a a pretty good lineup of stories, but please do continue to share. And we expect this is the first of many events. There might be more sharing sessions, certainly more forums and discussions about what real action we're going to take in Westford Public Schools. So with that said, let me get to our moderators that we're thrilled to have. We have Maida Palnati, who is a 2018 graduate of Westford Academy and is a student at Sienna College. And Maida is joining us from Juarez, Mexico. So we're we're crossing our fingers for the good internet connection that that we seem to have now, and I just jinxed it. So and we also have Ian Kim, who is also a 2018 graduate of Westford Academy and is a rising junior at University of Michigan. So welcome to the moderators. And thank you both. We're privileged to have you. We're thrilled to have you. And at this point, I will say goodbye for now and hand things over to the two of you.
Hello, everyone. As Chris said, my name is Maida Palnati. I graduated from Westford Academy in 2018. I think combating racism in our nation is a tremendous feat, of course, and it starts at home. And the way that it starts is with acknowledging that the problem exists. And so that's what we're going to do today, is we're going to share some stories that we've submitted to us both anonymously, and we're going to invite other speakers to share their stories with us as well. And as Chris said as well, this won't be our last time we're talking about racism. This won't be the last time we're talking about how we can improve as a school system and as a town and as a community. Ian, would you like to say anything?
I know. I'm very excited to be a part of this group. As someone who was kind of like unaware of all of these underlying problems that existed in society, like prior to what's been going on in the past couple of months, I think these kinds of steps like are great for someone like me, as someone who's like actively learning to be an ally to BIPOC people. And I'm very excited to be participating in this, and I look forward to getting the chance to share these stories.
Right. So without further ado, I am going to start reading our first story. This is an anonymous submission. In the story states, "My Indian name means a lot to me due to the story behind why my parents decided to give me the name, as well as the meaning of the word itself. Therefore, it does hurt me when I notice how many refuse to make the effort to learn my name. I can think of at least three teachers at Westford Academy right off the bat who did not call me by my name a single time, other than the first day of school when taking attendance. It is not like they wouldn't call anyone by their name. I will see them actively saying everyone else's name, usually American names that are easier for them to pronounce. But whenever I raise my hand, I would get a finger pointed at me or called you, or just a stare in my direction as if I'm supposed to understand that they are calling on me. Not only that, but I could tell one teacher wouldn't even call on me when I raised my hand, probably because he didn't know my name or didn't want to say it. I would rather have a teacher mispronounce my name for a few days and correct them each time than have them never say my name. This may seem like a minor issue to some of you, but for me, my name is a big part of my identity, and I want teachers to learn it rather than avoid it. My name is not at all difficult to learn or pronounce."
Our next story was also submitted anonymously. However, the student would like his name associated with the story. It's come from a member of the class of the 2025. His name is Orion Saunders. "Racial biases and prejudice has always been something I've had to deal with within Western public schools. My first ever experience with a racially biased staff member in Western public schools was in third grade, when a guidance counselor repeatedly went to me asking why I was such an angry kid whenever I wouldn't smile. She then set up meetings with me and emailed my parents over the smallest of things that weren't even relevant to my learning. My mom then had to talk to me about how I will never be consistently treated fairly by staff, peers, or people in power. These small things grew bigger over time. In sixth and seventh grade alone, I have had one racially unjust experience with a substitute teacher. She called me the arslur and said I wasn't like other kids. I have also been called the ensler seven times to my face by my peers. Four of these times, I went to my vice principal immediately, but the students only got a talking to. I got stabbed with a pen by a student. This kid only got an in-school suspension. I, a black kid, pushed somebody who took my personal belongings. I got detentions and a threatened suspension. I got my shoes out of the lost and found. The principal, vice principal, and lunch aids were convinced that I stole them, and I got a week of lunch detentions. The reason I don't go to the principal or staff at the school is because nothing happens. They shrug off the racial slurs and the racist comments like nothing ever happened. There are two teachers in my school that I am barely comfortable talking to about these things. We need change."
This next story was submitted anonymously to Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. It reads, "In middle school, an Indian dad of one of our classmates came to give a short presentation about Indian culture to the whole grade since a holiday was coming up. At the end of the presentation, he opened it up for questions, and a white classmate stood up and asked him, 'Do you like curry?' and why he was wearing a dress. It was a kurta. The whole auditorium laughed, and the dad handled it with stride. But none of the educators who were watching even reacted or pulled him aside. I feel sad thinking about this moment in hindsight because instead of feeling anger about this offensive question, about his offensive questions, I just felt embarrassed to be a part of a weird culture and to be considered the other. This classmate often ridiculed me and my other Indian friends in class by commenting on my smelly lunch, mocking our parents' accents, and intentionally mispronouncing or mixing up our names. This was done in open view of the educators, and I don't think he or his friends were ever told off. How come the people who need to broaden their understanding of global cultures are the ones who are so hell-bent against taking cultural education seriously?"
Our next story actually comes from a live storyteller. So if Meghana would like to join us now, please do so and feel free to share your story.
Hello. Can you hear me? Yeah, that's great. So before coming to the West Public School System, I lived in India for three years, and over there, I gained a very deep understanding of British colonialism, of the very vast history we have. And India as a country today still has, the presence of colonialism still hasn't been erased from the society, from the culture. Its impact lingers. So it's something very personal, very impactful for me. When I came to ninth grade, and everyone has a class of world history, I noticed something very wrong with the curriculum. It begins with the French Revolution, touches all over Europe, has deep talks about the philosophy, about the rulers and the systems, and then only a brushing, a brushing glance at Asia and Africa, that to drink points of colonialism. Not only does this implicitly imply that that these countries only matter when there is European meddling, they don't talk about the talk about the before or the after effects. Probably the biggest defense of it was at the very end of the chapter on British colonialism in India. There was a section that that dared to talk about the positive effects of colonialism, going on to say that India now has a vast railroad system because of the British. Not only is the statement incorrect and completely biased, I felt deeply offended. And it made me open my eyes to perhaps the larger affected impact of limiting the limiting a student's education to only European and North American history. It essentially devalues the rest of the world and promotes the idea that Europe and America are the centers of the world. I'd argue that you either call this, you either call ninth grade history, European history solely, and don't parade around as, don't parade around calling it world history, or change the curriculum and broaden a student's understanding of the world around them, which could hopefully reduce the amount of stereotyping and racially unjust activity happening.
Thank you for sharing that, Meghana. I'm just curious. So I know a lot of the textbooks and resources we use in our history classes also gear around Eurocentric learning, and I'm curious as to if you see a need or how you see we can fill that need with more authors of color and resources like that.
Definitely. So when it, so one of one of the things I'd like to say is that Churchill gets a lot of veterans in Europe, in North America, in Western history. When it comes to talking about World War II, in American history and in the global aspect, he's venerated as being the harbinger of, you know, peace, of being the pillar of Western ideals, when in reality, he's done some monstrous and horrific things that people in Asia often view as the equivalent of Hitler's reign in Europe. He actively participated in the Bengal famine, prioritizing his own citizens over those in his colonies and contributed to the massacre of millions of people. And I think it may, and what I thought about recently was that how history is very often manipulated or twisted to portray a certain figure in a better light than it is negative. I remember when I was reading, when I was studying in India, we, the mention of Hitler is not as extremely condemning as it is over here in, in America and Europe. Hitler over here, we unanimously agree that he was, that his actions were horrible, that he was a man that was truly a monster. However, the rest of the world, at least oraf-mining in the colonies, is that he played a very large role into helping us obtain our independence. And I think it just goes to show how history can be manipulated, twisted, how it's seen, and it's so multifaceted. And I would really love for, at least for, you know, whenever we talk about Asian countries, or we talk about very big moments in history, I would love to include, you know, several sources or other textbook samples that come from other countries relating, really narrating this event to understand how different people see different things, and that there's so many aspects, so many nuances to a story that it is not always black and white.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
It really resonates with me and a lot of the experiences that I have also had in my history class. Yeah, reminds me of one section in my AP US History textbook that described the Black Panthers organization as a violent group when indeed they are also fighting for racial justice, right? So exactly like you're saying, a lot of the resources we use and the ways in which we present history is manipulated. And this is definitely something we need to change about our curriculum. All right. Ian, would you like to read our next story?
Sure. So our next story also comes from an anonymous submission to the Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. Okay. "Education on racism needs to start as young as possible. People assume that elementary school kids are too young to understand, but the kids that have been targets of hurtful behavior understand from a young age that they are different from the other kids without even being able to call it racism. I remember being the target of jokes by white girls in my class and feeling like an outsider because of the color of my skin. I remember wishing I looked like them because every book that we read had a white child as the lead, which led me to believe that being white was the norm. I remember kids imitating Indian accents and putting dots on their forehead while laughing and making jokes. A lot of focus on diversity in the curriculum is put on the high school, but these types of things should be equally as important in elementary and middle schools. Learning about racism and empathizing with the experiences of people of colors can help deter these behaviors from morphing into much more serious words and actions and can help make more accepting members of our school community."
Yeah. So just before we continue to the next one, I want to mention Chimamanda Ngozi Adichie's TED Talk, which talks about the danger of a single story. This is something that was first introduced to me my senior year of high school. But in her TED Talk, Chimamanda Ngozi Adichie talks about how small children often color everyone with white skin and blonde hair because a lot of the resources that we share with small children focus around people who look like that. And she grew up thinking about how she could never have her own story. She could never be the protagonist of her own story. So as Meghana was saying, introducing those resources is really important at the high school level. And as this story says, it's also very, very important at younger ages, at the elementary level, at the middle school level. All right. This next story also comes from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram story, Instagram page. It reads, "One of the most vivid memories of racism I remember was in a class at Westford Academy. The teacher asked why the bombings in Paris received more media coverage than the other bombings that happened in the Middle East. I answered, 'I believe it was white privilege.' Rather than acknowledging my comment, he said, 'Personally, I find the term 'white privilege' to be racist.' I responded that I wasn't trying to be racist, rather bring up a disproportion. He responded with unrelated comments such as, 'Black people owned slaves too.' He asked me to defend the notion that black victims of police brutality were portrayed more negatively than white school shooters, and told me that I didn't have enough evidence when I voiced the specific reports of media coverage. I was one of four people of color in that class, none of whom were black, and all on whom were silent. The white students claimed that it had nothing to do with race, criticizing instances of reverse racism, citing instances of reverse racism as reasons why my viewpoint with was illogical. As a woman of color, it had everything to do with race. I was shut down and never felt comfortable sharing my opinion in that class ever again. I shared this incident with the guidance department, but was not given an avenue to report the teacher. What made it worse was the teacher was prompted two years, promoted two years later."
Our next story was an anonymous submission. "After our capstone, prom, graduation, and last night were canceled, I was happy to know that one thing would still be the same as usual, the neighborhood's senior banners. All was well until I woke up to a message saying there were anti-Semitic symbols spray painted on it. I have a very Jewish last name, so I knew this was rooted in racism. Once again, another senior tradition was taken from me, and it would be nice knowing the police would find this person because vandalism like this has been circulating in Westford."
I'm sure that many of our attendees have seen on Facebook and other social media platforms the hateful symbols that have been littering Westford and specifically targeting our Jewish community. And I would just like to take a moment to condemn that action, those actions. Obviously, those come from a place of misunderstanding, hatred, and ignorance. And as we talk about racism and discrimination, it is really important that we come out and say those things are wrong and that we need to move forward as a community and do better and condemn those things together. Our next story also comes from Westford Coalition Changes Instagram page. It reads, we go. "During my junior year history class at Westford Academy, we learned about the Tuskegee Experiment, where the US government infected black people with syphilis to conduct medical experiments on them without their consent or knowledge. When the teacher asked for our comments and reactions, he raised my hand and commented something about how we shouldn't trust the US government blindly given horrible things they've done, like the Tuskegee Experiment. In response to this comment, a racist in that class who had targeted me before because he knew I was Arab Muslim stood up out of his seat and yelled across the classroom at me, 'How about you go back to your third world country then?'" I was shocked and froze up, and so did my teacher. The fastest reaction was from my Asian friend who stood out of his seat and yelled back at the racist one. I'm not shocked that this white racist military kid was racist towards me and felt emboldened, spewing racist stuff, racist shit in WA. But I was shocked that the teacher didn't even react, and he didn't receive any punishment for this moment. My mom was so scared after the fact. She wanted to keep me home for a day because she knew his family owned guns."
This next story was also submitted to Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. "I have such vivid memories of coming home every night and crying myself to sleep when I was younger due to racist comments that my peers made. I am Indian, and I hated my culture so much. People used to make such hateful comments about how my lunch looked and smelled disgusting, even going as far as to move to a different lunch table. People would tell me that my hair looked oily and smelled because my mom, and smelled because my mom would put oil in my hair, a very common South Asian practice. People would mock my parents' accent. I was ashamed of who I was. I tried everything to erase my Indian-ness. I would try to lighten my hair, bleach my skin throughout my lunch as soon as I walked into school. I purposely made white friends. I never let my parents talk to any of the other parents or come to any sort of school function. I look back on it now, and I know that many of those kids didn't know any better. But that doesn't mean that what those kids did to me wasn't detrimental. I still don't fully embrace my culture now. Those comments have been engraved into my mind, even on a subconscious level. I catch myself wishing I had Eurocentric features. I catch myself not wanting my parents to come to my sports games or banquets for fear that they're going to embarrass me with their accents. I catch myself not wanting to hang out with other Indians for fear to be grouped with them. I hate how what may have seemed like small insignificant comments when I was in elementary school carries into my thinking today. Racism is not something you are born with. It's something you are taught. Kids beginning from when they step into schools need to be taught about racism and stereotypes."
Our next story is from a live submission. If Prisha Mark would like to join us. Hello, Prisha. Whenever you're ready, go for it.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. So I just wanted to share a brief story of my experience in elementary school. So during one of my classes, my educator was teaching us about slavery. And please keep in mind that I was one of the very few BIPOC students in that class. And we were all sitting on the rug listening when the educator suddenly called me out and said something along the lines of, "See, people like Prisha would be treated very badly because of the color of her skin." And I vividly remember sitting there on that rug in shock, tearing up a little bit as well. And I think this was probably the first time I encountered any sort of racial issue, especially someone talking so candidly about the color of my skin in front of my peers. And at the time, I know that I probably did not understand the gravity of what was said. But I definitely understood how her comparing me to slaves was definitely wrong and how I felt so uncomfortable in my own skin. And the point that I'm trying to emphasize with this story is that is not only the obvious that was wrong, but that BIPOC students are not educators' pawns to use to teach other students about race. And we should not be burdened with the job to teach others, whether that be our peers or other teachers or anyone in general. We should not be burdened with the job to explain any sort of racial issue. And the most important point that I want to emphasize is that our identity should never be used against us for an educator's agenda, no matter what that might be. Thank you.
Prisha, before you go, I just have a follow-up. I know that at the high school level, there had I know that at the high school level, there have been a lot of efforts made prior to George Floyd's murder about educating the student body about racism at our high school and what that looks like. However, a lot of these efforts have also attempted to implore students of color to educate their peers. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about how that has happened and how it's worked and whether it was comfortable and just if you could speak to that for a little bit.
Yeah, of course. So the first thing that comes to my mind is the Diversity Day that we had my freshman year, so that was a couple of years ago. And I know that we had some teachers of color come up and speak about their own experiences, whether that be in WPS or in general, other experiences that they've had in their lives. And while it may not have been students that were kind of burdened with that task, it definitely was teachers as well. And I know the intent of having these teachers of color to come on and speak and share their own experiences was to kind of show how this, this sort of racism and, you know, microaggressions do exist in WPS. However, you know, following that Diversity Day, there definitely were a lot of conversations going on, which were great. At least speaking from my personal experience, I did have a lot of white friends come up to me and, you know, ask me about certain things. And as much as I'd love to share my experience and love to educate them on it, I soon realized that it's on my job to do that. And I can definitely provide them with the resources that I have read or that I have or that I deem as very powerful. But it's not up to me to take the time out of my day to sort of burden myself with teaching them things that they are more than capable of teaching themselves using the resources that I give them or that they can find on their own. And I feel like if you are, if someone is very passionate about, you know, ending any sort of stigma or this sort of systemic racism, you know, within themselves or in their community, they should really, you can, you can, you can branch out and reach out to your BIPOC friends or anyone that you know. But it's never their job to educate you on these sorts of issues. And you are more than capable of taking it into your own hands and kind of doing it yourself. And I think that's what's most impactful is, you know, realizing all of this yourself and coming to the conclusion yourself rather than other people telling you what it is.
Absolutely. There's a really beautiful statement about anti-racism that says, anti-racism, one, starts with yourself. And two, you don't have to absolve yourself of all wrong to be anti-racist. You often can look in introspection, right, is very, very important. I, for myself, especially since George Floyd's murder, have taken a hard look at some things that I've done in my life as well. You know, we all have to work to educate ourselves better. And as Megan was saying earlier, that starts with having the right resources in our curriculum, in our education system to be able to do that, imploring authors of color. People who have, you know, people of color are experts on racism because they deal with it every day. And so as by reading authors of color, we are acknowledging that, right? But at the same time, as you're saying, Prisha, it's definitely not a person of color's job or a BIPOC's job to explain how racism has affected them. I think especially, I think this is especially evident with the fact that the majority of the stories that we are sharing today are anonymous, right? Because racial trauma is difficult and it's real. And it's never anyone's job to come out about the terrible things that have happened to them. So thank you so much for sharing. Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Maida, do you want to continue on?
Sure. So our next story comes from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page again. It reads, "I've experienced racism at Westford Academy before. Once, someone I didn't know too well called me the N-word. I asked her to stop, but she said it was fine because her boyfriend was black. I felt so sad. I just left as her friends started laughing at me. Honestly, her logic did not make any sense. It would be similar to going around punching people because your boyfriend was in the boxing club. I think my educator overheard us but didn't say anything. Westford Academy needs serious reform."
Our next story also comes from Westford Coalition for Changes Instagram. "I'm an Arab Muslim woman, and I didn't hide that during my time at WA. But there were certain students who I didn't feel the need to engage with, knowing that they would treat me badly. However, when I got stuck in a class with a certain educator, he felt the need to ask me in front of the class on the first day, is your name Arabic? Do you speak Arabic? Say something in Arabic right now. Are you Muslim, Sunni, or Shia? This made me super obviously uncomfortable and established me as an other in the class. He didn't stop there though and kept asking me combative questions about Islam while asserting that all Muslims are fundamentalists. What the F? When I disagreed with this statement, he told me I was wrong. Me, the only Muslim in the room, was wrong about my own faith. He also attempted to report me to guidance for not respecting authority or cops because he would constantly show videos of police brutality in class, then talk about how the people being brutalized deserved it. I was the only person in the class who opposed police brutality and often ended up in disagreements with this educator and the entire rest of the class. And this also like touches upon what Prisha's story really is like nailing home. Obviously, these aren't isolated incidences as we are seeing."
Absolutely. Our next story is in line with that. And it also comes from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. It says, "As a Latina in a prominently white town, I've had many uncomfortable encounters with people here, but nothing compares to the amount of pure racism that my own parents have experienced in Westford. My dad is a huge dork when it comes to flying drones. I mean, seriously, he has a whole collection, including remote cars, boats, et cetera. One day, he decided to go to Stony, to one of the baseball fields. He's done this for a while now and no one minds. He flies it on his own, in his own little area, nowhere near buildings or houses. Plus, he did it on weekends as well. As my dad is flying his drone around, a white male starts to approach him. My father knows enough English to understand a few sentences. The man continues to get closer to my dad and proceeds to say things like, F these Mexicans trying to take our jobs. Think they can do whatever the F they want. Go back to your country." Literally screaming at him. Mind you, at this moment, the man was approaching my dad closer and closer. So my father started getting scared that this man was going to hurt him. Thankfully, a woman came over and defended my dad and the man thankfully walked away. The woman continued to ask my dad if he was okay and if he wanted her to call someone for him. My dad kindly declined and thanked her. His drone flying got cut short because he was very scared that the man would come over again. And all my dad could think of is this man coming back with a weapon. He packed his stuff up and came back home and told us what happened. It was completely heartbreaking to hear. And I could see in his eyes that he was shocked and simply just in fear. To this day, my dad is super cautious when going to Stony baseball fields and gets paranoid."
This next story was anonymously submitted. "My senior year, I was co-captain of an academic team comprised of Asian-American students and worked closely with a white faculty advisor. Once, we attended a competition early on a Saturday during midterm exam season. Our advisor accompanied us as we traveled there by bus. The bus driver told the advisor how dedicated we were to get up early on a weekend morning during a stressful academic time to compete. In response to the bus driver's praise, our advisor responded, yeah, well, that's what it's like for them back in their countries. This makes them happy. First and foremost, my country is the United States of America. I was born and raised here, as are the majority of my teammates. We are not any less American because of our race. Moreover, our advisor was perpetuating harmful stereotypes about Asians, that we love nothing but to rigorously study math and science, typical model minority myth. On a personal level, this hurt because while the bus driver, who just met us, recognized our team's dedication, the advisor, who worked with us all year, decided that our accomplishments were a result of our race, not our effort and enthusiasm for learning. The exchange was between our advisor and bus driver exclusively. I doubt our advisor even knew I heard them. I should have said something, but I was honestly just so flabbergasted that they would say something like that, let alone behind our backs. But it took me the whole day just to process it. It was unsettling working with this advisor for the rest of the year, knowing how they thought of myself and my hard-working teammates. I wish I had said something then, but that's why I am now."
Our next story also comes from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. It says, "I am an Arab Muslim woman and never hid it. When I went to Westford Academy, the foreign exchange program is really dwindling. So an educator announced to our class that they were desperately needing more people to participate and asked people to raise their hands if they were interested. I was one of a few students to raise my hand, but when the teacher saw my hand go up, she gave a little sigh and said to the class, clearly in response to me raising my hand, we are looking for people with more of a traditional American household. It literally blew me away. I was like fifteen or sixteen at the time and was just so embarrassed that I had been called out in front of a class of my peers for being perceived as not American, for my ethnicity and my religion, and I just put my hand down. I still wish I'd said something to push back."
This next story also comes from Westford Coalition for Changes Instagram. "Growing up in Westford as a black kid, I never faced direct racism, but it was always there. In my, in my fourth grade class, I was the only black kid. One day, a boy came up to me and asked me about my black culture. At first, I just thought he was curious about my family and my culture, but as the conversation went on, I realized he was trying to make fun of my culture. He asked me why all black people have an annoying accent and why black people have huge lips and noses. The conversation had many other hurtful words and my teacher walked by after hearing him say incredibly hurtful things. Although racism has been getting better in the past few years, it is still an issue. It has to stop. I am done being called a person with an annoying voice because of the way I was born. I am done. Please, if you can do anything to help the world be more loving, do it. Don't be afraid. Do it for me."
Our next story, excuse me. Our next story will come from another live storyteller, Prachi Jever, if you would like to join us. Go for it whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Prachi Jever and tonight I will tell you about my name. My first name, spelled P-R-A-C-H-I, is pronounced phonetically. My last name, spelled J-H-A-W-A-R, is read phonetically as the W is not read phonetically as the W unit is pronounced like a V. I always correct people who mispronounce my name because I believe that my name has power and I deserve to be treated with respect. Yet, I have faced a lot of backlash from educators about my name. When I politically, or when I politely corrected a white teacher on the first day of sophomore year, he snarkily, snarkily said, "Don't insult my accent," and moved on to the next name on the attendance list. His snarky comment left me the butt of his joke and made my desire to be respected seem like an inconvenience. That year, I had another teacher who only referred to me by Prachi out loud twice the whole semester. The first time was on the first day of class. The second time, he said my name while I was silently doing my work. This might seem, this might seem strange, but it was clear he had intentionally learned my name just to prove to me that he knew it. Every time I raised my hand in that class, which was often, he would only refer to me as you or point in my direction. He somehow knew every white student's name in the class, but dehumanized me into the brown girl he could just point at without bothering to learn my name. As an activist in high school, I had many meetings with teachers and administrators. And while my fellow activists were referred to by their first and last names, I was always just introduced as Prachi. Everyone shied away from my last name, but I am more than just my first name. This still continues today from the same educators. I wish, I wish that problem, the problem with, I wish that ended the problems with my name. But before graduation, the administrator who knew me very well and was going to announce my name continuously asked me how to pronounce my last name. That wasn't the problem. I corrected her every time until she got it right. However, the problem was that at graduation, she was able to get my last name right while butchering my first name. Sadly, the list didn't end here. Many Westford students have names like mine. However, no one deserves to feel like their name is an inconvenience. Yes, it may take effort and time, but that, um, but it's likely that that BIPOC student whose name you're taking the time to learn correctly will feel so much better. Teachers and administrators, inclusion starts with putting the effort into pronouncing names correctly."
Thank you so much for sharing, Prachi. I know as, as some of the other stories we've read tonight articulate, combating racism starts with acknowledging people of color and the ways in which we acknowledge them the best or by calling them by their names. If you would like to talk a little bit more about another, other ways in which you feel people of color can be better acknowledged in Westford Public Schools, that would be awesome.
Thank you. I think that one of the biggest things that educators can do in Westford Public Schools is first off, acknowledge that people are coming from different racial backgrounds, not in the same way that people have described today as in like, oh, you're like, you're Arabic, this, this, this. But more understanding that like their background is connected to who they are as a person. And when you choose to not acknowledge that they're a person of color, they're, they're a part of the LGBTQ plus community, they have a disability, et cetera. You're choosing to acknowledge, or you're choosing to ignore part of who, what makes them a student, what makes them a Westford resident, what makes them who they are. And so being able to actually engage in these conversations and like get to know someone, get to know a student, don't actively shy away from getting to know the student because you're afraid that there's some sort of cultural barrier, sort of barrier in backgrounds. We're all Westford residents and that's something that we can, that connects us and brings us all together. And while it's important to know that like we shouldn't only focus on the differences between us, the differences are what makes us such a great community and such a well-connected community. And so I think educators, like that includes having more representative works of literature within our education system. That includes discussing, as Migna had mentioned before, discussing history that is encompassing of the whole entire world, not just select populations. And making sure that we can diversify our curriculum, diversify our staff, diversifying the avenues with which students can learn is extremely important in making sure that we can acknowledge their personhood and their cultural identities and backgrounds, et cetera.
I think it also comes down to acknowledging those voices by listening to them, right? I think in the last recent months, we've heard a lot of push from people of color. we've heard a lot of push from people of color at Westford Academy to change our mascot from "The Gray Ghost" to something that does not have racist origins. And I think listening to those voices and acknowledging, okay, maybe this is something that's hurtful. Maybe this is something that I have not thought about because I haven't had the need to think about it, but it is something that affects the students of color at our high school. And so, listening to those voices is really, really important.
I 100% agree.
Thank you, Prachi. I just want to say, like, you know, there's like a lot of things that would need to be done, but it's inspiring that something as, like, you know, that doesn't take a lot of effort, like, learning how to correctly pronounce someone's name can have such a meaningful impact on these people. I think that's something that, like, maybe administrators and educators weren't aware of before that, but I'm sure that those that are on this call today will be taking those steps. And it's nice to see that something so easy and so actionable, you know, that can have that impact. Because, like, curriculum changes, those kinds of things, like, a lot of those take a lot of time to, you know, get through. But like, something as simple as, like, learning how to pronounce someone's name really has a sincere impact.
And one thing I just want to add real quickly, I'm guessing that there's educators on this call who are really worried about making students feel uncomfortable by asking them continuously, like, how to pronounce their names. And I promise you, like, taking the time to ask a student how to pronounce their name multiple times is so much better and more congruent to that student than just choosing to ignore it. Because I've been in this situation multiple times where, like, I'm waiting for the attendance list and I'm sitting in anxiety, waiting for a teacher to mispronounce my name and, like, have that whole interaction within myself, whether or not I should correct them once the time that I step in. And just having a teacher ask first to begin with is so much better than having to hide a part of myself or being worried about how I would be faced with correcting a teacher.
Absolutely. I think this also goes for pronouns as well.
Yes, that is true. This is an intersectional issue.
Yeah, like, I use she/her pronouns. I'm sorry, I did not say that at the beginning of this call. My fault. But yes, by introducing ourselves with our pronouns and by asking someone what pronouns they use, regardless of how they present in terms of their gender, we are being inclusionary of trans people, and that is really, really important. All right, Ian, would you like to share our next story?
Sure. Our next story also comes from the Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram. "In fourth grade, we had a substitute teacher come in. She was older, maybe in her late 50s. She did roll call and stopped at my name. Of course, she did. It was difficult to pronounce. She asked, 'Are you Vietnamese?' Surprised that she could identify my background, I responded with, 'Yes.' The next question she asked was, 'Where in Vietnam are your parents from?' As a nine-year-old, I already knew the implications to my answer. I lied. 'They're both from the South,' she responded. Oh, I lied. They're both from the South. She responded, 'Yes, the good Vietnamese people. We like them.' I did not correct her because even as a nine-year-old, I understood her ignorance. I would like to clarify, you are not good or bad based on where you are from. I am Vietnamese-American. Everything I have learned about the Vietnam War has been through my own reading because we honestly don't really cover it in the Westford Academy curriculum. In fact, I'd like you to really reexamine how you teach all of American history. The way history casts American actions as a fight against communism in Vietnam is not nuanced at best, and duplicitous and harmful at its worst."
This goes back to our history curriculum and how, as we talk about introducing resources that are inclusive and that, you know, don't portray people of color or BIPOC people as people who, you know, are mal-intended. I think a lot of our curriculum unfortunately has those themes. And so, reevaluating that is very important. Our next story also comes from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. It says, "I am part Mexican but pass as white. Throughout my childhood, K through 12, sharing my heritage with people ended with them thinking I was making myself the butt of some joke. My elementary educator also didn't want me to do my family culture project on Mexico. I still remember the name and face of the white boy who asked me what cartel my family was from."
Our next story is not really a story, but it was anonymously submitted. "Sometimes I feel like there's no real safe space for students of color in Westford Public Schools. All of the administration, deans, principal, the guidance counselors, the social worker, and the psychologists are all whites. There are so few teachers of color, and I don't think people realize how harmful it is to never see someone who looks like you in a position of authority. Also, the few BIPOC or LGBTQ+ teachers we have are constantly targeted. I remember a class at WA where students would call the teacher the F-sler. WPS can't keep minority students or teachers safe, in my opinion. If a school doesn't teach or enforce basic empathy, then what does it do?" And I think, like, this anecdote really reinforces a lot of the stories that we've heard so far with, like, a lot of, like, students don't feel comfortable going to places of authority within Westford Public Schools because of incidences where they feel like they've been diminished or kind of, like, thrown off to the side. And that's something that definitely needs to be looked at, you know, from the highest level down to the lowest level. Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, we also, in putting out this forum, right, this is also something that is school committee-led. And obviously, the two of us are moderating it because we want to encourage students to be able to share their experiences so that we can acknowledge this problem and move forward from it. However, we do understand that when we have a system that has been inactive for so long, the amount of submissions that we're getting is not nearly the number that have actually occurred because it is really, really difficult to express the incidents that have happened in your life to people who have not traditionally taken action. And I know that there are educators and administrators listening, and I don't want to put blame on you at all because I see a place where we can move forward together as a community. While a lot of these things have happened and we need to acknowledge them to move forward, there is still a space to move forward. And I understand that since the passing of George Floyd, a lot of our nation has woken up. And I want to take this opportunity to seize that, to seize the fact that people are recognizing that racism is everywhere and we need to combat it to make sure that our nation moves forward, to make sure that our citizens, our other people and non-documented people who live in our communities are comfortable and are acknowledged because they are people and they are part of our community, no matter what their skin looks like, no matter how their gender presents, no matter anything about their identity. They are people, and we need to acknowledge them, and we need to come out against these hateful, horrible things that have happened. And I think that starts in our school systems at Westford Academy. Yeah. Our next story also comes from Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram page. It says, "Last year in history, we would often have debates about issues going on in the world. Except, they weren't really debates. It was mostly just me and some of my other conservative classmates yelling at each other. One day, the topic of Islam was brought up. I'm Muslim, so I knew whatever they were about to say could offend me. One of the guys in my class said the Quran teaches the opposite of Christianity, and everything they teach is evil. I was very clearly offended, and I asked him if he had ever read the Quran, and he said he hadn't. He then continued to say he didn't need to and that Muslims are terrorists. Throughout this entire exchange, my teacher had not said an entire word. She just sat at her seat and watched fit and watched the fit happen. This wasn't the first time either. Every time things would get a little rowdy, she would just sit in her seat and not say anything until she had to. I think it's important for teachers to understand that even if they're uncomfortable in a situation, that at some point, they have to intervene. I really wished my teacher had said something that day and stopped the conversation before it could even get to that point." I think this story really resonates with the anonymous submission that Ian just read because one of the best ways in which we can hold ourselves accountable, especially as teachers and administrators, is to intervene when racist incidents are happening. I think it's very uncomfortable for teachers to do so, but it is so much more uncomfortable to be a person of color facing racism in that moment. And I often recognize the intersectionality with racism and the politicizing of every issue that we talk about in school. But I also think it is really important to recognize that racism is wrong, no matter where on the political spectrum you lie. So, I think it is really important to recognize those two things as separate. And as a teacher, as an administrator, it is your job to intervene in racist incidents when they happen in front of your eyes. It is not sharing your political beliefs to do so.
I would 100% agree. Thank you, Mina. Our next story was anonymously submitted to our forum. "I was one of maybe four black people at my time in Westford Public Schools. Race was something that impacted me every day at school. There was not a day that went by that I didn't think about how I looked different from everyone. For a lot of students at Westford, I was the first major exposure to a black person. I had to carry the burden of being what a black person should be. I was expected to know how to rap, dance, play basketball, and all the other stereotypes. I was lauded for my athleticism for track, but I was never expected to be more than an athlete. I actually would be pretty quiet and reserved in classes because I felt that I just didn't fit in. There were no students to look like me. There were no teachers or coaches who looked like me. As a matter of fact, I did not ever have a black teacher until my last year in college. When it was time to talk about using the N-word during Huck Finn, I was asked if it was okay to use the word. The child was expected to set the tone. When slavery came up, I was the expert, or at least, that is what the glares from the class, including teachers, expressed. To sum things up, race made me feel like an outsider. In Western public schools, my blackness was approved of when I perpetuated the wanted stereotypes, but disapproved when I had showed the perceived negative ones."
This brings to mind the use of derogatory language in English classes, especially surrounding the "ensler." I think it's really important that we don't use the "ensler." You know, like, if we are not black, we should not say the "ensler." It is completely derogatory to do so. I understand that there are educators who see the use of "ensler" in an educational setting as appropriate, and I would like to disagree with that. I think we should reserve that word for the black community to use to empower one another, and it is not our job to use it, ever. This next story is also an anonymous submission that we received. It says, "I am an Asian-American graduate of Westford Academy. I was in middle school when the high school put on the musical Miss Saigon. While accompanying my parents to pick up my older sister, I passed the posters of students in yellowface. Seeing the students and reading the plotline online later at home, I hoped nobody would make an association between the characters in the play and myself. The female Asian characters were hyper-sexualized. The male Asian characters were comedic, or sinister, or both. The participants seemed set on portraying an exotic and inaccurate version of Asian people. Of course, at the time, I didn't have that vocabulary. I just assumed high school was scary, people seemed to have certain weird ideas about Asians, and theater was not a place for kids that looked like me. I am certain that the directors did not intend to harm in leading these productions. When Westford Academy's website states that "Westford Public Schools does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, gender identity, or homelessness," I am hopeful that this will be true of all of Westford Academy's programs, particularly its most front-facing and visible one." Yeah, I would like to say that as someone who has also participated in theater productions during my time at Westford Academy, there is a lot of things that were portrayed in a very insensitive fashion towards communities of color. And of course, discussions within the classroom about race are very important to look at, but also, a lot of our time at Westford Academy is spent in extracurricular activities. And these extracurricular activities are not exempt from racism. They don't get a pass from being anti-racist. And especially within theater, that starts with the ways in which we depict people of color and the ways in which we empower people of color. If people of color cannot be portrayed by the people of color at our school, they shouldn't be portrayed."
Our next story was an anonymous submission to Westford Coalition for Change's Instagram. "A substitute teacher came to our school in sixth grade. She allowed everybody in the class to move around in their seats and do our class activity with a friend. I then got up to join my friends. She said to me, 'No, not you.' I said, 'How come?' She replied, 'You aren't like the other students.' I sat back down to my empty table to do my worksheet. Halfway through the class, I was having trouble with my worksheet, so I got up to ask a question. When I got to her desk, I told her my problem, and she said, 'What are you, the arser?' I looked at her and replied, 'Is all this because I'm black?' She then sent me to the office with no reply." I guess this also brings up, like, we see this as a repeated issue with, or repeated incidence with substitute teachers, you know, not, I'm not entirely sure if this is true, but maybe they don't have to go through the same types of trainings that our full-time educators do, and therefore, like, aren't aware of, like, the stereotypes that they may be perpetuating and then, like, the people that they may be harming with their words. But that's definitely something that I personally would like to see changed within our school district.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the stories that we've read so far have included teachers and administrators at Westford Academy and at other school levels who are full-time as well. So, I think introducing anti-bias training that reaches teachers and administrators, but also reaches coaches, directors, substitute teachers, is really, really hugely important. Because even if a substitute teacher is only coming in for a day, you know, like- you know, like obviously this experience that that this person faced is horrifying and continues to scar them. You know, so I mean, I don't exactly know how specifically we could do anti-bias training for substitute teachers. But I think it is hugely important that if that is not something that is able to be provided, that those substitute teachers are surrounded by people who do have that training, who can intervene if something like this is to occur. And I think it's really important that all full-time teachers and part-time teachers and administrators and coaches and directors and anyone who interacts with students receives anti-bias training. Our next story also comes from Westwood Coalition for Change's Instagram page. It says, "Before class started on of the spirit days, the America Day or Patriot Day or whatever it was called, I was talking with someone who I considered a friend. I had forgotten to wear anything red, white or blue and this friend said to me, "It looks like you don't love America. Maybe you should go back to where you came from. As a born and raised American who hasn't ever lived outside the US, that hurt. I don't think he was joking and he never claimed he was either. Then later on the bus home, he was talking with a white friend of his who wasn't wearing red, white or blue clothing and made no mention of it. It's just the little things like this that Westwood has a real problem with, in my opinion. Because it's hard to catch people in overtly racist acts and call them out on it."
Our next story was anonymously submitted. "When I was in elementary school, I was picking up recycling along the edge of the parking lot at school with one of my friends when I came across a note. The note said something along the lines of, the following people will be exterminated." And then proceeded to list four names. Mine and the names of three other brown girls. When I read the note, I was confused and embarrassed. I showed it to my friend and decided to hide it in my lunchbox. However, my friend was scared and decided to tell one of the cafeteria staff about the note. The cafeteria staff member asked to see the note, confiscated it and alerted the principal. Next thing I knew, I was alone in the principal's office with a police officer without my parents being interrogated. I was asked multiple times in a harsh tone if I had written the note and told that I should not have been playing in the area of the parking lot in which I found it. They pressed me for what felt like hours and gave me a private handwriting test. I was 10 years old. After determining that I had not written the note, no further action was taken to find who had written it. It has taken me a full decade to realize that this event was entirely racially charged. The existence of the note itself, which demanded that four brown girls be exterminated, the way in which the police and principal attempted to place blame on me and the lack of follow-up to find out who had actually written the note is absolutely astounding. Now, I'm 20 years old and only now do I understand how I was violated. I never once questioned the attentions of the principal and the police at 10 years old. Why would I? In hindsight, I do not think they had my best interest in mind."
Our next submission is another one that was submitted to Westwood Coalition for Change's Instagram page. "I was nominated to join peer leaders for my leadership skills. I remember being really excited because that was the one of the first times I had been recognized by a teacher for my abilities in and outside the classroom. At this time, peer leaders was a new program. On the day of the workshop, I was immediately taken aback because of the lack of BIPOC in the room. Out of a hundred or so students that they had nominated, there were probably only three or less students who were BIPOC like me. This led me to intentionally internally question whether I truly belonged in that room and if my nomination to become a peer leader had been a mistake. While I recognize this is not as blatant a statement of racism as the other posts on this page, I share this story now because it is clear that there are more BIPOC leaders in our community than just two or three out of 100 people. Even the creators of this page serve to illustrate that. To move forward in our education system, it is clear that we must push our educators to challenge their stereotypes of what it means to be a leader. We must push our community to foster the leadership abilities, both innate and learned of minority children. And more importantly, we must push ourselves to take action as leaders, not bystanders, until everyone is treated with respect, compassion and dignity in our communities."
This next story was submitted anonymously. "In chorus class during the holiday season, I was told that if I had found a musical piece for Hanukkah, it could be learned and performed. I took time to contact a popular Jewish a cappella group and got music for us to learn. When given to the teacher, they responded with, we don't have time this year, maybe next year. It should be noted, we were learning a new Christmas song the next day. We also had no Hanukkah song scheduled for the performance, but multiple Christmas songs."
Now, so we've read quite a few stories and had quite a few discussions. We have a lot more stories that were submitted both through the Instagram page and through our forum anonymously. And we want to emphasize that this is the first of many discussions that we will have around this topic. I hope if anything, this has served as an opportunity to show that racism does exist in Westwood and it does exist in Westwood Public Schools and that we need to take direct, consistent action to combat it. I think for the first time in a long time, we have a lot of teachers and administrators listening. And it is really, really important that we are allies in this. We move forward together."
Thank you, Maida. Thank you, Ian, so much for being our guides through the stories tonight. And thank you to everybody who submitted and apologies to those who submitted stories and we didn't get to tonight, but we hear them all and we will be taking all of them with us to the school committee. The administration will read these and the link is open, so if you have more, continue to submit. I am really happy that we had so many people from the community joining us. We had at least 150 attendees listening tonight and we're thankful for your time tonight. I know it wasn't easy. I mean, I can only speak from my own experience that it's hard to hear these stories and so for you to stick with them says a lot to your commitment to listening and learning. So that's really appreciated. This is being recorded. I believe Westwood Cat will have it up on their YouTube channel. They usually get those up pretty quickly and we will try to get the word out about the video for that because I think people are going to want to see this who couldn't make it tonight. And so we go on from here and we'll we'll continue the discussion and we'll continue taking positive action to make our schools what we hope they can be. Thank you, Maida. Thank you, Ian. You guys were perfect and good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.